I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee meeting for Monday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. This meeting is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room at the Town Hall, One Metcalf Square, at six P. M. It is also available Zoom and will be broadcast live. May I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Yeah.
Mr. Matucci? Ms. Petrie?
Here.
Mr. Purinton?
Here.
Ms. Barry?
Ms. Powell?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ms. Leonard, can you lead us?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We would like to have a moment of silence to honor the students of the Apalichi High School, the students and the teachers who, and their tragic event. Thank you. We have no public comment in the room. Do we have public comment on Zoom?
We do not. Karen Chavez is on, but is the only person on right now, but I'm assuming she may be having some audio troubles because it keeps flashing, but I'll check in with her and give her an opportunity.
Thank you. We have no delegates and visitors tonight. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of August nineteen, two thousand and twenty-four?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Littieri?
Nope.
Mr. Purell, that was me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion by Mr. Purinton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard? Upstaying. Mr. Littieri?
Upstaying.
Ms. Petrie? Upstaying. Mr. Purinton?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
I think we have to make a, I think we should hold these over until the next meeting.
No. Well, there's not a quorum of people that were here last time.
So we'll put one for the next agenda.
Yes, yes, please. May I have a motion for warrant, S. V. W. twenty-five dash four, in the amount of three hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and nine cents?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Littieri, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Purinton?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. For buildings and grounds, we have a request for Winarc for the Special Olympics, and along with that, we are, they are asking for a motion to waive the rental fees.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes. And these, I can take together, these are requests from the PTO for use of the William P. Gorman Fort Banks for an ice cream social, for their meeting dates, and for the trunk or treat.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Mr. Purinton. Any discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes. We have a request by the W. H. S. P. T. C. Club for their meeting dates.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? Hearing none, motion passes. We have a motion from the, we have a request from the Winthrop Youth Football for their football leagues, football games.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Mr. Purinton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes. Request from the Merrimack United F. C. Soccer Games for use of the facilities.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? Hearing none, motion passes. A request from the Arthur T. Cummings PTO for their meeting dates.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Petrie?
Second.
Second by Mr. Purinton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes. And finally, we have a request from the Commonwealth Clinical Services for use of the, for the Winthrop Community Health Forum.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Purinton, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes. We have no subcommittee reports tonight, but we do, I believe, have a superintendent's report.
Yes, no, I ran upstairs to get it. Just a few things. Grants have started to come in, so our entitlement grants have started to roll in. We have to apply for those every year, even though they're only entitlement grants, and they have a window of opportunity for you to apply for those. So for our Title I grants, Laurie, Galvin, and Kathy Delvento do a lot of work around those grants, writing them, getting them into the Department of Education through their now-not-new gym system, which is a little different than what we've used in the past. And Jen O'Connell does the special education entitlement grants. So just for sort of a comparison, the majority of the entitlement grants that we get separate from what we receive from ESR, the Early Childhood Special Education Program Grant, this year, that grant is twenty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. That grant is six dollars more this year than it was last year, which is, these are important things to kind of keep in the back of your head. The two-forty grant, that's the I. D. A. Special Education Entitlement Grant, that's the largest grant that we do receive in the districts, again, separate and distinct from past ESR grants, and that's based on special education numbers. This year, we received six hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. That's an increase of two thousand, six hundred and six dollars from last year. Then we get into the Title Grant, so Title I was the basic Title I grant. This year, we received three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and four dollars, and I can forward this to you all if you would like to see it. That's six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars less than what we got last year. Title II, which is Title II A, Supporting Effective Instruction, that we use to pay for mentor teachers, that's where that money comes from, to pay the mentors to work with our new teachers, which is a requirement to have a mentor for a teacher. This year, having upwards of thirty teachers new to the district, they all have to be assigned a mentor to work with them, and there are, there's a rubric and a timeline with what the mentors do with our new teachers. And again, this year, we received fifty-five thousand, one-twenty, which is four thousand and ten dollars less than last year. Title III is the E. L. A. Acquisition and Academic Achievement Grant that we are entitled to apply for. This year, that grant, we received forty thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars, which is about a five thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollar increase. And then Title IV, which is a Student Support Grant for Academic Enrichment, this year, we received twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which is a thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars less than last year. So overall, those entitlement grants come in at one million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. When you add them all up, that's four thousand, two hundred and four dollars less than we received last year. Why is that important to know? One, because it's less money coming to us from, from the state and federal government, but for Winthrop, the context is eighty-five percent of our grants are salaries. So they fund salaries that are in existence. And if you think about that, when you think about year to year, whether a teacher gets a step increase or whether there's a percentage rate in a salary increase, if the salaries go up and the grants stay even, then we still have a problem. If the salaries go up and the grants go down, we have a bigger problem. And just throwing in the ESR III funding that we received over the past three years, we had some salaries in there, five hundred thousand dollars worth of salaries over a three-year timeframe. The ESR III grant is not an entitlement grant any longer, so that was a limited grant that we received three million dollars and change over a three-year period of time, and those funds are no longer available to us. Those are gone.
Are they gone on the thirtieth?
On the thirtieth. Well, they have to be fully expended by the thirtieth of this month, which means that there are no salaries paid out of ESR III that go beyond September twenty-fourth of this month. Now, we budgeted for that and planned for that. However, moving forward into F. Y. twenty-six, you can see how that, that story will continue to be frustrating for us, because if next year, if the grants go down again, and the salaries buy automatic, because if one teacher goes up a step and they're in a grant, then their salary goes up. And if those grants keep coming in lower, we keep getting deeper and deeper in the hole. And that's the reliance on grants. You know, they talk a lot about not embedding. Grants are supposed to supplement your instruction, supplement your support staff, meaning give you more than, than your own community can fund. That's what they're designed to do. Surplanting is a term that's used for reliance on those grants to have people that you can't do without. And Winthrop is not the only district in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that has now turned into the school of supplant, but it's out of desperation that we have to do that. So the reading specialists, the reading teachers, the E. L. Teachers, the nurse, multitude of staff salaries, custodians that we had in ESR, all of those, all of that money, as it gets smaller and smaller and the cost gets larger and larger, we start to run into a wall of not being able to fund those things. So as we were looking towards F. Y. twenty-six, knowing that the ESR funds were going down our way, we projected for that. The state in its wisdom, when they give more money on one end with Chapter Seventy, they take it from somewhere else. And so I don't think folks anticipated these grants dropping as much as they have. For us, is a four-thousand-dollar loss is pretty big compared to the fact that we actually need way more money than that to fund those same people year to year. So hopefully, those grants will not continue to go down. We have not seen any new entitlement grants. I keep hoping every day when I pop on the Department of Education's website that they're going to say, hey, for all you people that are suffering, because learning loss and the impacts of COVID are still here, and the money from ESR III that was provided to communities to help mitigate some of the issues that were caused by learning loss, that money's gone, but the issues are still here. And I think all of us in the field of education have said from, you know, from the jump, that that's wonderful that we're getting money for three years, but who made that rule? That this, that COVID was only going to impact student learning and, and learning loss and recovery of learning and the social, emotional impacts of, of, you know, what happened in our world? Who made the rule that that was only going to last three years? The person who created the funding made that rule. So the impacts are still here and the money is not, but I think it's important to understand that in terms of our grant funding. We are always seeking grants. We are very mindful. You have two seasoned grant writers and three with Kathy. That grants are wonderful, but you have to weigh what you put into the management and the time in receiving a grant, and what they want back from you once you get that grant. The amount of work involved sometimes outweighs, you know, the twenty dollars that you receive, because you have to have somebody managing those. And you have some people that are wearing four hundred and fifty hats in the management field here. So, but we're constantly looking for them. So a little update on that. Couple of things we still have to fill, I'll get into that when we get into build personnel, but Charlie passes, I heard there was some information at one of the town council meetings about Charlie passes and access to Charlie passes. The school district has had Charlie passes for, I can tell you, for at least seven years. And we reach out to the M. B. T. A. every year after August fifteenth and ask them for M. B. A. T., M. B. T. A. Charlie passes. And what they are is they're cards that are provided to the school for the, to be able to give to students who need them, and the students load them with funds, but it's at a discounted rate for them to be able to ride the buses to and from school if they want, Monday through Friday. So we get, we order five hundred a year, and we use approximately four hundred of those, but then kids lose them, so we have extras. We have to keep track of them, to report it to the M. B. T. A. So those are all in, primarily for students in grade six through twelve, because they're the ones who need the pass to get on, onto the bus. I believe other kids can ride with an adult for free, students under a certain age. The secretaries at the buildings know how to handle those, so they get those out to the students, and the students are notified that they are there and ready for them. And the kids do a pretty good job of gathering those up. School bus service, for those students who live beyond two miles, so the students who live primarily down the point, I now know every street down the point and where they are. We had a number of riders this year. I believe we had fifty six children between the grades of kindergarten and sixth grade, which are the students who are eligible for bus service from the town. So this criteria, you have to live two-point-one miles or beyond is the actual definition, from the door of the school which you attend. And we use a very specific Google mapping system, and you have to be in grades kindergarten through sixth. If you're in seventh grade, you're not entitled. Eighth grade, you're not entitled. So we do a reach out every summer to those families. We go through our student information system, which had flipped over this year, so to power schools, so that was a little bit of a trick for us, getting all those streets and names and querying that. And then we get all the students, and then we do a reach out to the parents to let them know that the bus service is going to be available. Our, our issue is we don't have a bus. We have vans, and we have One Driver. So we really work hard to make sure that anybody who is entitled to transportation gets back to us and lets us know, Monday through Friday, are you taking it to school? Are you also taking it home? If you're only taking it on Mondays and Tuesdays, and then we map the whole thing out, so that we can maximize, one, the traffic, not sending multiple vehicles to the schools, but also making sure that the bus that we have has enough space to fit the students on it. So as of last week, we narrowed it down. Skip Calley is a retired custodian and a bus driver extraordinaire. He's wonderful with the kids. We have, he drives a van that holds eleven students, but we also have a fourteen passenger that we could swap out if need be. He has a monitor on the van, on the van. We talked about multiple hats. The monitor is actually a lunch worker who jumps on the van before she starts her day at the middle school, and then at the end of the day, Skip picks her up and she does the afternoon run. So he'll be doing one run to the Gorman Fort Banks from the point in the morning, and then pick those students up in the afternoon and bring them back, and then same at the Cummings. So he'll pick the kids up at the point, at the P. S. A. hall, drop them off at the fort, go back, pick up the third, fourth, fifth, and one sixth grader, bring them to the Cummings and to the middle school, and then he'll sit back for a little bit, and he'll do it all again in the afternoon. Kindergarten students are going to stay in the building because they dismissed earlier, then first and second, so they'll stay and do a twenty-minute wraparound with F. K. O. in the same area that F. K. O. is in, but we'll have an instructional aide in there monitoring. Some of the key things are students that we require is they, when they get off the bus, when Skip brings them to the fort or to the Cummings School, they have to go right directly inside the building and into cafeteria. Supervision is huge. We take attendance on the vehicle. When the kids get on, we actually circle the vehicle and take attendance, making sure there's no one left on the vehicle, and we do that at the end of the day. It's not the bus driver's response. The bus driver's responsibility is to take attendance of the kids when they're in his custody, and then when he releases them into the school, they become the custody of the school. So some folks want kids to be able to stay outside and play. That's just not possible in terms of our being able to monitor whether the students have entered the school. So if you, if you think about students who would get off the bus and go play, and they've never entered into the school, then if they left the play area and decided they were going to go to somebody's house for the rest of the day or go hang out in the park, we would not know that they got off that bus or that they weren't in school, because the parents think they got to school. So if the parent puts a child on a bus, then you can be guaranteed that they're expected to be at school. If your child doesn't get on the bus, it's, it's the parent's responsibility to call the school and, and let the school know that the student is absent. We provide the parents with guidelines. We provide them with instruction. We provide them with sign-offs so that they do, they're very much aware of the rules. So we're excited to start that on Wednesday. Skip communicates with all the parents. He has everybody's name, telephone number, who needs to be dropped off to an adult. K. One and Two cannot get off the bus in the afternoon, and if there is not an adult there to receive them, third, fourth, and fifth may, and sixth, but not K. One and Two. So if that should happen, the student would be brought back to the school, and those parents will be called by the principal of the school to come and retrieve the child. So that's just a sort of normal bus route. Cross your fingers for Wednesday. We'll see how it goes. Then, just a few little things. Data meetings happening, and CPT, math CPT meetings, and curriculum meetings, and the diagnostic assessment schedule for the month of September for math is underway at the Gorman Fort Banks School. They have their schedules. We get to review them, Laurie and I, to make sure that we're in compliance with getting that data early on. The PTO is sponsoring an ice cream social there on Friday, September thirteenth. The details are all over the Gorman Fort Banks website, and the PTO is amazing in terms of their outreach, so the kids are looking forward to that. After-school enrichment is being scheduled now at the Arthur T. Cummings. Parents have been, been notified. Some of the offerings are gym, kindness club, a drama club, chorus club, Lego club, and social, emotional learning club, so the kids seem to be excited about that. Parents have been pretty reactive in sending in their, their slips and making sure that the students are, are getting registered. Back-to-school night on the twelfth at the middle school, and that's from six to eight. Mr. Curly has been jetting that out all over the place. And just a quick update on enrollment. I have nothing on athletics or clubs as of yet. This is really the first full week of school coming up now, so we'll get more into that as we move forward. But I do have an update on enrollment, as I did last meeting. We're up to two thousand and eight students.
Wow.
The highest number since I've been here.
Wow.
So, that being said, we have, we have some work to do on the reregistration in grades three, six, and nine, so we have some folks that have not successfully completed that. So as usual and customary, we've reached out to those parents beginning this week to let them know that if they did not do the reestablished residency, that they have to do it now. They can make an appointment to see us. They can do it online, but the deadline for that is September sixteenth. And if they cannot prove their residency by September sixteenth, then there's a host of things that happen. We let them know that we're not going to allow, we're not going to allow the student to remain enrolled. However, we then need to have conversations with individual families before just pulling the rug out from underneath the student, but that's just one of the layers of our residency process. We think, after speaking with principals, that some of it, a lot of parents, for us, they said it was a language issue. I can tell you it's not, because we put it out in multiple languages. If there is a language we missed, I would agree with that, but the notices that go to the parents about what they need to do for registration is based on how they're registered, how they are enrolled already. So if they need things translated, they get those things translated, and we've had people here all summer. But we did find out where there are a number of families that leave the country for the summer, and so they're just getting, some of those students are just returning, and they're just getting to emails. So we're working on that. So that number may go up or down a little bit, but I don't think it's going to change dramatically. And I think that is it for me for today.
Okay. Homeschool applications, do we have some?
We do. Last time, I think I told you we had three. We are now up to eleven. Most, they're all returning homeschoolers from the past few years. We have one in first, one in second, one in fourth, one in fifth, two in sixth, one in seventh, and one in tenth. And then I have a couple other applications still out that haven't completed yet from a couple of the families that were on, and I'm still waiting for some information from some of the families who said, yes, we are intending to homeschool. At the end of the year, when I reach out for the progress report and updates, I ask them for their intent, and so it gives them a little time to get more of the paperwork started again, because everybody kind of shuts down in the summer. So I expect that I'll see more of them coming in over the next week or so.
So we need approval for eleven tonight?
We need approval for eight.
For eight.
Eight, eleven total. Those grades that I just said to you.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the homeschool applications that have been filed?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Purinton?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? I just want to verify that you have verified all of those and?
Yes, yeah, there are families that have been homeschooling since the beginning of COVID, and I think they've found something that really works for them, and, and it's been very positive for a lot of the families and their experiences. So they've gotten really good at what it is that we need for progress reports and keeping me in the loop, and they've been nice, nice families to work with.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Personnel?
Yes, so these run a little bit behind. So when you get these agendas, I, I look at them like they're a couple of weeks old, even though they're really not. They're a week old. However, thankfully, we, we fill most of the positions before you even get them. So the resignations, we had two ESPs resign and one special education teacher, and that was actually either two or three days before school opened, which is not ideal, or within the last couple of days. So you can see the postings that we have. Speech-language pathologist is one of the postings. I believe we filled that today, thankfully. Food service workers, we're always looking for food service workers. You can go on our website and check that out. And that particular position is at the Gorman Fort Banks. We have an ESP at the middle school position that is still open. They have, you know, active applicants, but it's still open for another day or two, so if people are interested in that. The special education teacher position is a long-term subposition for maternity leave, and the custodian position that you see is also a leave of absence for a medical issue. And those, I believe, are all that we have right now. We still have an open, we have, it's been posted before, so that's why you don't see it here. We still have a position open for STEM at the middle school. Right now, we have Rosemary McCarthy, who's the retired STEM teacher. She is back, and we have a long-term sub in there. When I say long-term, meaning until we can fill the position. And that particular person is teaching, and Rosemary McCarthy comes in three days a week, or two days, I'm not really, three, three days a week, and works with the person who's doing the substituting, working, getting the curriculum in place and making sure that we're up and running and that, that teacher that we have in there now. The temporary teacher is able to move forward with the curriculum and that the kids' Chromebooks are working, and that they're tied to the platforms they need to be tied to. We had, we did have a teacher. We did hire a STEM teacher who then saw a science job opening, which is really where that person wanted to be, but wanted to get their foot in the door. And it was hard to, hard to pass up a certified science teacher position and leave that open. It's hard to leave either one of them open. But the applicant pool for STEM teachers, Brian is a little frustrated with, so we're working to see how creative we can be. I don't know how long we can hang on to Rosemary McCarthy. Not long, but he said he, Brian told us today that he has, I believe, he had an applicant that he was going to be interviewing, so we're hopeful for that. We have a couple of ESP positions open. We have a lot of maternity leaves coming up. I happen to own one of them, not me. It's not me, but my daughter will be having a baby in January. And there's a few more folks that are having kids, which is amazing. And thankfully, they're telling us early enough that we can start the process of looking for folks to cover those. And we have a lot of great ESPs who have bachelor's degrees, many of who are working towards attaining a teaching degree. We work with Salem State as well with their fellows to see if we can get folks to come in and do their hours. So sometimes people say, oh, well, you're going to have an ESP cover the class. That's not really a teacher. Some of our ESPs have been here long enough that they, they are pretty well-schooled, and when our teachers do go out, they leave very, very detailed lesson plans. And I think it's also important to know that the teams that they teach in, whether it's the third-grade team, the fourth-grade team, they swarm over whoever it is that's covering for another teacher, to make sure that that teacher has everything they need. Support in the classroom, access to learning platforms, making sure that they understand the curriculum, materials, and supplies that they may need, suggestions for how to do the lesson, help with correcting things and breaking down, you know, the data and understanding what's happening within the classroom. So we've been very fortunate there. So I thought that was just a little better understanding of sometimes what happens when we, when we have to have people who technically may not be certified, but we are also seeing a lot of our ESPs take that next step, which is really good.
Excellent.
Quick question?
Yes.
So overall on staffing, you, you, we're in a pretty good position.
We are.
Class size, how is that looking?
Yep, so class size, I didn't bring it with me. I think I brought it at the last meeting. I'll, I'll bring a real clear understanding, but low twenties, you know, twenty-two. It depends upon the class, the individual class, so I can give you a, an idea of it. So if you take kindergarten, for instance, right now, we have a number of one sixty-two, there's seven, every class is seven, elementary has seven teachers, one hundred and sixty-two kids in K., one hundred and forty in first. So low- So low twenties, you know, twenty, between 20 and 23, and that's with seven teachers.
It's, it's just amazing how quickly that can change with an influx of kids or a decrease in teachers for whatever reason, right? I mean, you can see those numbers go from the low twenties to the high twenties in a blink of an eye.
So, yeah, so third grade, it has 166 kids in it this year. And of the 166, there's 34, oh, 32.
Third, 22, I think it's 30, I think it's 32 and then there's...
Thirty, 32 ML students, first language, not English. So, and that's a, that's a large group, so larger class size. And then you add, you know, when we, when we do, when we look at a class, there's all kinds of data points that you can look at. You could have a class size of 118. And if that class size of 118 has the largest amount of special education ML students and that the class size itself is super important, but it's, you have to know what you're, what you're looking at in terms of the confines of the classroom and what one teacher in a classroom is doing with multitasking, you know, with differentiating instruction for multiple groups of kids. Third grade right now is our largest elementary classroom at 166. Next largest is 163 at the fifth grade. But yeah, you, you take that number and divide it by seven and then take that number and divide it by six if you cut one teacher and you take that number and you divide it by five if you cut two teachers. And, and you're talking, jumping from, you know, 23 to 28 to 33. I mean, that's how it goes up. And I've just made those numbers up.
Right, but that's, it is pretty substantial.
I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. For some reason, I thought we had gone to six teachers for one of the grade levels. Is that not true?
No, so first, first and second grade, we had eight teachers last year. So first and second grade last year and through COVID, so with that mitigation money to mitigate learning loss. Those were our most vulnerable learners, you know, in, in K-1 and 2 because they were learning, had been learning through screens. So the first year of COVID, we added an additional, and we had, we had a bubble year, in a kindergarten bubble, I think we had 157 kids in kindergarten the year, the year COVID hit. So that bubbled up to first and second grade. So we added with SRO3 money, an additional first and second grade teacher. And that lasted for those three school years. At the end of last school year, when we knew the money obviously was running out and we, level service budget was going to be less than level service, we had to look at how to, where we were going to, where we were going to go. And so the numbers were less in terms of the class size numbers in 1 and 2. But ironically, we also had a retire, a teacher retire in first grade and a teacher resign in second grade. So although we didn't fill those positions, they're gone. So it is a cut. So when, even if people retire, if you don't put their position, a person back in that position and you don't pay for it or because you can't pay for it, it's a cut from your year before, from the service you provided the year before. So as of this school year, there are seven academic classroom teachers in K through, K through five.
In K through five.
K through five, six, seven, and eight. There's, there's seven in, in grade six and I think grade seven has eight. I'll bring it to the next meeting. I had it with me two meetings ago. And those were because of, again, because of bubbles in students. But the, the, the less number of teachers you have, the larger your class size absolutely will be. And it, it's pretty dramatic and people think, wow, you, you know, seven teachers, okay, so you lose one. You're talking...
Huge.
Okay, now you've got to spread 23 kids out in between six other people, you know, and 23 kids with varying, varying needs. And then, you know, you think about a teacher in kindergarten, even though there's, there's an aide in each kindergarten classroom, you have one teacher and one aide to 20. This year, it's, it's 162 divided by...
Twenty, 20 kids.
It's like 20 kids per class that have abilities that are, a spectrum of abilities that are the length of the room. Some know how to go to the bathroom on their own, some don't. Some can walk in a hallway by themselves, some can't, some...
Open a milk container.
Some, some can butter a bagel, some can't. Some can walk in a line, some can't. Some can speak English, some have no idea what you're saying to them and they have a bellyache and they need to see the nurse. So two people in a room with 20 kids is even, you know, that in and of itself, two kids have to go to the bathroom, we're in trouble. If we go up in class size and down in staff, that's going to be a significant concern.
Those 157 are now, well, it's probably a larger number now, and they are in what, second grade?
So right now, we have, those kids that were in kindergarten are now in third grade, right? Third grade, it's one, stated 166.
Okay.
So those K kids are in, are now in third grade.
And you have how many teachers in the third grade?
Seven. Seven, yeah.
They're at 20, they're 23.3, right?
Yeah, right. And there's no, there's no, as far as instructional aides are concerned, in the, in Winthrop Public Schools, there are only seven instructional aides that are not tied to IEPs. Any other instructional aide in the entire school district is a mandated special education or 504 student support. That's, that's in a contract known as either an IEP or a 504 plan or a healthcare plan. And I, I think it's important to note too, the sign, we've seen a significant increase in healthcare needs of children in our school systems. And when I say healthcare needs, I'm, I'm talking about huge jump in diabetics, students with diabetes, huge jump in medically fragile kids. We have, we have students who have feeding tubes, we have students who have trach, trachs that need to be cleaned out and monitored throughout the school day. We have students with severe airborne nut allergies. And all of that requires healthcare plans. And we have one nurse per, per school. And on average at the elementary school, we have close to 500 kids in a school. If you think about that, one nurse, 500 kids. Two adjustment counselors, 500 kids. So there's not a lot of fluff and peanut butter hanging out in the Winthrop Public Schools when we're talking about, you know, you want to talk about the override or you want to talk about just funding in general, you talk about grants being reduced. There's, there's not a lot to cut, there's nothing to cut without a significant impact.
Right. Can I just ask another quick question about those grant reductions? When did you find out about the essentially $4,000 deficit?
So there's, the grants come in, grants come in, the numbers come out usually the end of July, 30th of July. So, yeah, it's, the timing is not great.
Yeah, so it's really late. So you have to essentially budget for the year without, right.
Yeah, and so if you remember the 9C reductions, I think it was 2003, I was traumatized by it when the, when the, the government gave you, you know, you had all these different grants and all of a sudden in November or December, those grants that were in your coffees got wiped out. And so those are also, you know, the risks of a changing economy. And that's why they tell you it's a sup, it's supposed, grants are supposed to be supplementary versus surplanted.
But, so like Lisa was saying, for us to have lost 6,000 in Title I and 4,000 in Title II, $10,000 is a big chunk for us because when you pay a grant and you pay a salary, you also pay their MTRS contributions out of the grant. So of Title I, 387,000, they said, 220, 360 something is...
50,000 in MTRS money.
But 60,000, I mean, 360 of that, 387,000. Salaries and MTRS.
So if that grant goes away, those positions automatically, if it goes away on a Tuesday...
Right.
The positions go on a Tuesday because there's no funding for us.
And the other thing is that 6,000 turns into 12 when you're talking about reduction and then you're talking about an increase in step lane or whatever. So to, you know, to supplement that.
And we, you know, we have been very fortunate that we have been able to balance that over the past several years. And, you know, COVID gave us a lot of things that we didn't like, but they did give us money at a point in time where the town of Winthrop was not going to survive with the budget we had. Like I've said it 100 times, I would have been before the town council four years ago asking for an override if we didn't have the mitigation money from COVID. And, and it helped us. It helped us get to where we are. Now is, is the impact bigger? It is, but I, you know, I'm not a betting person, I probably still have my communion money, but I, I would not think that folks would have been up for an override during a global pandemic when people weren't working. And I think it would have been disingenuous to ask for money when you had money, albeit it was temporary money. And now we're at the point where the temporary money is gone. It wasn't a trick. We didn't think we had, we didn't hide money from people. The community actually told us how to spend that money based on the way we had to have that grant in for the COVID money, you know? So, thank you.
Any other questions? Public relations?
Yes. Patty, put it over here. Obviously, the opening of school is public relation. I think we did a wonderful job. Traffic's always going to be an issue. We're watching the Gorman Fort Banks traffic, working with the police and fire department. More to come on that after we do our analysis of the opening and the minor change in 10 minutes of time that we put in place for the sole purpose of getting common planning time and teacher schedules in, in a, set in a fashion that we could do more with the limited time we have and also our thoughts on, on traffic. So more to come on that. Senior Nick Capuccio has been selected to the Boston Globe Herald preseason Eastern Mass All-Star team. I think that was a couple of weeks ago, but kudos to him. He just keeps racking up the awards. Lots of fundraisers happening. Class of 2026 is selling Viking blankets. You can call Kristen Bonapani at 617-290-3752 or look at the high school website or Facebook. ATC is, the annual PTC calendar fundraiser is also in effect. They have $10 raffle chances for prizes and that's on the website as well. And then on Wednesday, October 9th, the annual walk, bike, or roll to school is being scheduled. I approved the flyer today for the PTA, so you should see that coming home for elementary schools. And that's a, a nice way to, to get to school and avoid construction, the traffic and everything else. So, but folks, lots of really good feedback. I keep my fingers crossed I knock on wood.
And then lost our connection.
Oh, I keep losing connection.
I apologize, but...
And I apologize for losing connection. Laurie just told me.
Looks like we lost connection on the Zoom.
Lost connection on Zoom. We've been struggling a little bit with Zoom and I don't know if it's the internet or if it's the system itself.
I think it's the internet a little bit.
Yeah.
Everywhere, today was really slow. I've been working on it.
So, and that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other public relations? Erin, welcome back to the students and the teachers. We are thrilled to be starting a new school year, very excited. And I've heard a lot of good things so far from parents. Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lutere, second by Ms. Petry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. We are adjourned.